Okay, I'd like to call the Holly Township Parks Board Meeting to order at 6:06 PM. And I'd like everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Could we have a roll call, please?
Joe Hutchins.
Here.
Donna McBride.
Here.
Patrick Feeney.
Here.
And Kathleen Martin.
And Courtney is saying she's running late, we're still waiting for her, so we will, hopefully she should be here any minute here. Okay. Approval of the agenda. Do I have any additions to the agenda? Any? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Now we're on to public comment. Members of the public can address the board once recognized by the chairperson. Comments are limited to a maximum of four minutes. The board may extend this time by up to additional four minutes by a majority vote. Prior to addressing the board, members of the public are requested to clearly state their name and address for the board, for the record. Do we have?
My name is Michelle Renaud, address is 237 West Rose Street, Holly. I have a packet for each of the board members. First, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. To give a little background, I first became acquainted with Holly Township Parks in 2017 when my son was a member of Junior Broncos football team. I watched the mismanagement of the parks firsthand and was disgusted at what was going on. I have waited years for the opportunity at the supervisor's position. I have applied twice now. After learning of the opening of the position, I researched and reached out to everyone I could on the board in the township. I met with several board members. I walked the parks when I had bronchitis in December. I researched grants, came up with a game plan which I shared with multiple board members and outlined in my cover letter to my resume. When I did not get an interview, I was disappointed to say the least, considering the members I had been able to contact seemed excited for my vision for the parks and had told me they loved the grants and programs I was going after. In the days following the applicant selection, I was very upset to hear that a board member, Mr. Hutchins, which I have never spoken to and never met, was telling people around town that I was a plant by the township supervisor and that I was not selected despite years of coordinating youth programs and grant writing, which was one of your biggest requests. Let me make this clear, I have my own mind and I am no one's plant. At the same time, I began getting calls from people around town saying they knew the other applicants. I did my own homework, I looked up the individuals myself. What I saw made me request a FOIA from the acting president, Pat Feeney. I sent an email requesting the FOIA, which per Michigan law is acceptable. I have provided both my request and a copy of the rules for the board off of the Michigan's website. That was done on March 18th, 2023, the copies are there if you want to look at them. I did not receive any communication from Mr. Feeney until April 5th after I resubmitted my resume for the second time. I was able to obtain the information through other avenues and was not going to file a complaint until Mr. Feeney chose to put it on Facebook. A complaint will be filed soon, I assure you. What I saw was that I checked almost every box and there were many that this board outlined for the position. During all of this, as a Holly Little League board member, we had been communicating with Mr. Miskovich, the previous president, about collaborating with Holly Little League. During the March 16th meeting, Mrs. Martin brought up that she would like to see the board continue that collaboration. The entire board agreed, it's on video. As soon as I started asking questions, our formal and informal requests to be put on the agenda were completely ignored by multiple members. We were forced to call the board out on social media to even get put on the May agenda. That is not how I like to do things. My reason overall for speaking tonight is to make sure that the public knows how mismanaged and unethical members of some of the members of this board are. Many of these members have been on the board and have sat back and watched the decline of our community's parks. This is not your park. You do not own it. It belongs to the families and children of this community. I am making it known now that I am still keeping my resume in the running for the position. This is not about money for me. I believe that it takes a village and our children deserve better. They deserve enriching and affordable programs that only a Parks and Rec can provide and we are failing them right now as a community by letting this go further. With that said, I am respectfully calling for the resignation of Joe Hutchins and Pat Feeney. Thank you.
You all know me, my name is Roberta Pichota. I truly had planned to stop at this whole thing, but with Mr. Feeney's behavior recently, I don't feel like I can anymore. To give you the background information, after the supervisor meeting and the candidates were chosen, I asked Courtney and Sean for, well, we get the packets and they're not online like most groups. Courtney was at her grandfather's funeral, okay? Sean told me that he did resign. I did email Donna. At that point, I also talked to Karen Winchester, who said I could ask anyone by email. I have literally emailed the Michigan Department of Agriculture, EGLE, Oakland County Animal Control, most of you know my fight with the devoted barn. I've emailed everyone and every one of those has filled an FOIA without a form. I know Donna, I don't know why she didn't reply, but she didn't. Did it go to her spam? I don't know. But I know Donna and she didn't just ignore me to ignore me. I would give her the benefit of the doubt on that one, I truly do. But I did get the information she requested through the supervisor's office, so I let it go. Then on March 21st, Mr. Feeney, uninvited and unwelcome, showed up at my house to drop off a form. The same form I told him was unnecessary repeatedly. He didn't knock, opened my door, stuck the things in, left and texted me from down the road that he left those. I'm gonna tell you straight up, you are uninvited and unwelcome and trespassing. Don't come to my house again unless you have been invited. Are we clear? Because we need to be here. You have made that transparent post at least have the guts to tag me in it. We all know you were talking about me and Michelle. Baloney, baloney. Because your answers showed you were talking about me. This is, the way you have treated the women of this community, whether it be April, Joanna, Michelle, or myself, is disgusting and it needs to end. You cannot and will not treat women like we aren't as important as you are. It doesn't work that way and believe me, as an elected official, we don't forget these things. I promise you, I will not forget. And just to show that what date I did, I printed the things for all of you. I don't blame Donna, it could have gone to spam, could have gone anywhere, but it was done on March 18th, well before you brought me the form.
Can you pass those down, Joe?
I would just like to apologize, it did go to my spam and I did look it up today and it was there, but I was also told that you had the information that you needed.
Right. I don't know why you answer, I don't blame you, could have gone to spam, whatever else, but it was done.
Any other public comment?
Angela Wallace, 709 Barrett Street. As you may or may not know, Mr. Feeney verbally assaulted myself and Ms. Kristen Watt at Battle Alley Coffee on Saturday, April 15th, 2023. He began slamming the door when I said hello to him. Then he went over to Kristen Watt and verbally attacked her. He made his way back to me and verbally attacked me. This happened while we were attending a DDA volunteer fair hosted by the DDA volunteer coordinator, Hillary. When we walked outside, Mr. Feeney continued his assault on both of us. He raised his voice stating that Kristen and I were community advocates and that we were not advocating for him. He kept stating, we were not stopping people from saying he was stacking the votes. I want to state for the record that it is not my job to advocate for Mr. Feeney or for this board. He was also upset that Kristen and myself don't attend your parks meetings. We're here tonight, though. He raised his voice further when I stated to him that I cannot attend every meeting. He yelled, he berated me because I told him I have other matters that are more important. This furthered his anger and his hostility. Kristen then walked away and at that point, Mr. Feeney took a step towards myself and was less than two inches away from my face. I took a firm stance and he did step back while he was still yelling that we should attend every meeting in this township and this village. I personally think that attending every meeting is very creepy and incredibly invasive and would be considered both nosy and ridiculous. I do have a life that does not include nor involve meetings. This abuse is a pattern with Mr. Feeney. He repeatedly attacks citizens in our community. He has physically and verbally assaulted Ms. April Brandon and Ms. Joanna Barnes, of which I was a witness. He has now assaulted Ms. Kristen Watt and myself. I firmly believe if I had not taken such a firm stance with Mr. Feeney, he would have physically attacked myself. This behavior is completely unacceptable of a leader of your board and a police report was filed this morning. Mr. Feeney, you have disqualified yourself from leading and I am asking you for your immediate resignation from this board. The people of the village of Holly and the residents of the township of Holly deserve someone in leadership that does not throw fits and someone who does not physically and verbally assault members of these communities.
Anybody else for public comment?
Kristen Watt, 102 South First Street, apartment 3. Good evening. It brings me absolutely zero pleasure to make this public comment. I would rather be home eating dinner with my family. On Saturday, April 15th, somewhere around 11:30 AM, I was attending a DDA volunteer event to recruit new volunteers, being held by Hillary Alguire, volunteer coordinator for the Downtown Development Authority. As I was leaving one community event to head over to another, the Village Parks Cleanup at Waterworks, I went to say hello and goodbye to fellow citizen Tressa Kennard, who is in the audience tonight, and her niece, who has a child. They were in line at the Battle Alley Coffee Shop. At this time, Patrick Feeney got in line behind her and I said hello, Mr. Feeney. Then he began to loudly and aggressively verbally attack me regarding a variety of issues that included a Facebook post that I did not make, accusations of a perceived and suggested town hall meeting that I did not propose or have anything to do with, and accusations that I am not doing enough as a community activist in regards to this township parks board. It was aggressive, it was loud, and I responded in a reciprocal manner stating that I would ask that he never speak to me in this way again. I proceeded to leave the establishment and I was angry, overwhelmed, as I was caught off guard. As I went to start walking toward the park, I glanced back in the window and saw Mr. Feeney standing in the middle of a group of women, the volunteers who were there at the DDA event. He was standing and confronting Angela in the same manner that he did me. I immediately walked back in and inserted myself between the two of them and stated boldly that his behavior was inappropriate, disrespectful, and if he wanted to pull this mess, he can take it outside. After Angela, myself and Pat went outside, an 11 and 1/2 minute conversation ensued. During the course of this conversation, both Angela and myself were continuously interrupted, minimized, accused of things we have no part of, and then belittled for not attending parks meetings or defending Mr. Feeney or policing Facebook on his behalf. On four occasions, I stated his behavior toward me inside was unacceptable and I will not accept being yelled at or verbally attacked. On all four occasions, he apologized and also gaslit me with statements such as, "I got a little excited. I'm sorry you perceived it as an attack. I wasn't yelling." And finally, I don't think anyone here would say that my behavior towards you was inappropriate. His minimization of this verbal assault on me was minimizing the reality of what occurred and a lack of personal responsibility. I was also aware of the two other instances, which you will hear about tonight, this is now the fourth incident in nine months, where Mr. Feeney's temper and feelings of entitlement to infringe on women's personal space, to physically intimidate and use loud and aggressive tones and at this time unwanted, and at times not with me, unwanted physical contact have occurred. There were numerous witnesses to this event on 4/15, including audio and visual, um, audio and visual, um, proof. One of these witnesses is Hillary Alguire, who is also here tonight, who has been authorized to be here by the DDA as a representative if needed for questions this evening. It was embarrassing, upsetting, and insulting and showed poor judgment and disrespect to myself, the citizen and child I was speaking to, the rest of the many customers, the DDA, and the business owner. I have known Mr. Feeney for many years. We have oftentimes collaborated, we have agreed on many things, we have also disagreed. I also know his entire family, including his wife and children, who are wonderful people. It again brings me, because of that, no pleasure to bring this and address this board tonight. If I do not advocate for myself, who is going to? And other women in this community? We will not accept aggressive and volatile behavior, not only from him, but from anybody. I am certain that Mr. Feeney would not accept this from anyone if it had happened to his wife or daughter. Previous apologies have been made to others and yet this aggression continues. This leads me to believe no change in approach is possible at this time and I would also respectfully request that Mr. Feeney resign from this board effective immediately. Thank you.
Any other public, yeah, public comment?
Please bear with me for a moment. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Joanna Barnes and I live at 3393 Harrington Drive. This is the first time that I've spoken publicly about these encounters, so please forgive me if I seem nervous. We are talking about a pattern of behavior here with Mr. Feeney. I've had two encounters with him myself where he has felt it appropriate to verbally accost me and even go so far as to touch my person. One encounter was over with what Mr. Feeney believed was my opinion on a post he had seen on Facebook. The other was in connection with his attack on Ms. Brandon over a Facebook group that she moderates. In both situations, he felt it appropriate to escalate his behavior to one which was alarming and even scary for those who were experiencing it. I didn't file a police report either time because both times, Mr. Feeney calmed down and apologized. And frankly, I didn't feel they rose to a level where they would be taken seriously. After all, being a bully isn't illegal. I now wish I had filed them. Mr. Feeney had citizens speak out against him being appointed to a council seat because they were concerned about his temper. He was quite upset about that and made public comment to that effect. And yet, here we are. I also understand one of the concerns that Mr. Feeney has expressed is that he doesn't have enough public engagement in the Parks Board. I would like to ask both Mr. Feeney and the entire Parks Board how they expect anyone to wish to engage with it when Mr. Feeney is literally accosting people in the street. No one wants that kind of leadership. Many people don't feel safe with it. I myself am a victim of trauma and feel absolutely no need to subject myself to triggering experiences because Mr. Feeney deems it necessary. Mr. Feeney is an elected official, which means that whether he likes it or not, he is held to a higher standard regardless of his big feelings. But beyond that, he is someone who is continuing a pattern of leadership that is unacceptable. We've had too many instances of people in power in this community feeling that it is appropriate or their right to be able to scream at or belittle citizens, especially women. I know that I myself am tired of being minimized and treated this way, as are the people I work with in this community. We expect better. As I said both times, Mr. Feeney accosted me, he apologized afterwards for his behavior. However, an apology is merely a statement of intent. It is changed behavior which truly shows that someone is remorseful. And Mr. Feeney has not only shown that he is not remorseful at all, in fact, he has continued and escalated his behaviors. We are now speaking about four women who have gone through some version of this, of this, including my first experience. This is unacceptable. The people of Holly deserve better than the bare minimum. They deserve leaders who can keep their calm, who can keep decorum, and who can treat people with respect, as we're able to do after being attacked and speaking to you. Mr. Feeney chooses to use his voice and his position of power in order to intimidate citizens so that he can get his agenda accomplished. That is the message that we are sending if his actions go unchallenged. If Mr. Feeney refuses to step down from his seat effective immediately, as is wise and appropriate, I would expect this board to do everything in its power to hold him accountable as we the citizens intend to do. Thank you very much.
April Brandon, 414 Oakland Street. Can you hear me now? Because of this recent behavior of Mr. Feeney, I'm here today to tell you about a couple of experiences I had with him. I feel it necessary to say I represent myself only, I do not represent any boards or councils I sit on. I am not here in any official capacity as a mental health counselor, although sometimes I speak clinically. Late last year, Pat Feeney verbally attacked me outside of a village council meeting and physically grabbed me. There were about six witnesses. He was supposedly under the impression that I removed him from a Facebook group I admin for. He created a conspiracy based on this that I was censoring the public. I didn't even know the guy. Pat grabbed my shoulder, started screaming and spitting in my face. When he began squeezing my shoulder and shaking it a bit, I started yelling at him to back off. At this point, several witnesses interceded on my behalf. He then put his hands on another woman and her husband intervened. The husband's protection seemed to calm Mr. Feeney down. Mr. Feeney apologized, then he got worked up again, then he calmed down once more, I left. I don't want to mislead anyone or exaggerate by saying I was physically assaulted, although Mr. Feeney certainly did take liberty and overt familiarity by physically grabbing me. What I am saying is that Mr. Feeney behaved hysterically and was emotionally violent. It seemed to be a politically motivated ruse to try to damage my reputation. Not long after this, I was elected to the village council. We had a seat open that Mr. Feeney wanted to be considered for. One council person motioned for his appointment, several of the witnesses of our previous incident were in attendance, spoke up, told the council what they saw, Mr. Feeney was voted down. He came to the next meeting to defend his name during public comment. He said he never put his hands on me, that we were fine as we had spoken after the incident and come to an understanding. He mentioned how I never made a police report. We did come to an understanding. I showed him evidence that I never banned him from the Facebook group, that he had actually left the group on his own. At that point, he still acted like he didn't believe me until the group's creator, Mr. Bigum, verified it. The understanding I came to is that Mr. Feeney jumps to conclusions based on apparent delusions and he seems to want to appear aggressive and act intimidating when he's disappointed or doesn't get his way. I don't know what understanding he came to, but he lied when he said he didn't touch me and he lied when he said he was banned from the Facebook group, or his memory is failing. I'm glad I was not at the coffee shop and didn't have to experience this unstable man's inability to emotionally regulate himself again. He later came to a library board meeting and held up his phone to record the meeting, like this, like aimed directly at me. You can see in the video that I welcomed him warmly, I thanked him for his free service as a videographer, even though he sat in hostile silence. And what his goal was that day, I have no idea. His intent to be hostile was clear, but he didn't interfere with the meeting. I have no complaint on his behavior that day, I'm just pointing out the pattern of intent to you. The hostile environment he creates around himself is not conducive to promoting a healthy work environment and neither is it going to promote an atmosphere that will entice other qualified candidates to join this board. It seems to me that when Mr. Feeney feels threatened by women in leadership roles, that he lashes out in an attempt to create an emotionally charged and socially expensive situation. "Mr. Feeney, you are not the gatekeeper of women in local government or leadership roles and you either need to learn to get along or to get out." I never made a police report and that's true because I had hopes that Mr. Feeney's apology was sincere and meant that he was going to change his behavior. For giving you the benefit of the doubt, I'd like to say you're welcome, even though you tried to use the courtesy I extended you as false evidence to clear your name. I still would have let it go and allowed you to save face without correction if not for your evidenced allegiance to harassing women. I regret the decision I made to not file a report. Your continued aggressions to local women you have issues with has greatly disappointed me. If you care about this community, and I think you do, I ask that you resign while you get the help you need and allow room for someone else to step in your place and create a more welcoming workspace. If the board performs an ethics investigation, I would be happy to interview.
Anybody else for public comment?
Anna Mattson, 15091 Western Valley. From my understanding, a new chairperson is going to be appointed in two days, so I don't understand the point of this meeting being today. I really wish it would have been after the township meeting, had the opportunity to do what they needed to do. This is a very important decision and so much of our money is going to waste. There's, just in the past few months, FOIA violation, there's been Open Meetings Act violations, and anyone can take you guys to court and that's money that has to be wasted when it could be put into our parks. So I would encourage if you guys do interviews tonight, to leave the decision until we have a fuller board and have a chairperson. It's just, it's just what's right. It doesn't need to be done tonight. Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? Seeing none, we move on to the new business. Well, I should say old business. Approval of candidates to fill board vacant board seats. We've had three applications presented to us and what this is, is that we were going to recommend these people to be added to the board. Donna, you know one of the individuals that?
Yes, David Luntine, I'm sorry if I said that wrong. He's been working on, I'm sorry, I gotta take a second here. He's been working on the...
Disco?
The disco course, which I've had a lot to do with and I really want to see it. Continue and I don't want to see it wrecked because some people just...
Thank you.
David has literally put this course together with a bunch of volunteers and it's cost us nothing. They've done tournaments to pay for it all, the man's wonderful, he's been in, he's been here for years in Holly. He came to us knowing that I was pushing for them to get rid of that park core course and that was going to cost millions of dollars, that wasn't going to happen, and put something in here that was family oriented and that was going to get this park going again. I think basically that he is the best person for this, he knows what he's doing, he's put together tournaments, he's made money for this, for the, for a certain already, lots of money. He does things way, way beyond what he needs to do. And I, I think he's like, he would be a perfect person for this board and I know that somebody else has, can veto everything we say and everyone we put on here, but I believe that he is the best person to be put on this board. I understand, I think his wife also put him, but if we put him on board, we can't put her on the board too. I'd like to make a motion to put him, well, I, we have questions to ask, I can't really make that motion right now, but I think that he would be the best person out of these people.
Questions, Donna, for the coordinator?
Oh, the coordinator, okay.
Right coordinator.
Okay, great. Then I would, I'd like to make a motion that we consider David Luntine for the board because he is definitely a number one upstanding person and he has already done and proved himself that he is a great man and is going places and I think that he would really be good. good for this board.
I'll second that. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That's our recommendation on that. Now, that's for the seat, the first seat that was resigned, so that one's coming up fairly soon, Mr. Cullis, on that one. And...
Today.
Yeah, today. So, the next seat that's going to be open, we'd like to, I think we could take a recommendation. We had the, I think people saw the information about Jeff, is it Carey? And I didn't know if anybody wanted to make a motion to accept him being their second choice for the other vacant seat. Anybody in the audience that would like to speak on it? Personally, I don't know. Gentleman, you did, you know, fill out the form for us and showed us interest.
Yeah, I'll speak about Mr. Carey. He's a longtime resident on Tucker Road. He has a Bachelor of Science from the University of Michigan. He's retired, has all the time in the world to help us out now, for a thing. And he has, has leadership positions as homeowners associations, that sort of thing. So, he's, he steps up. I would like to make a motion at this time to appoint Mr. Jeffrey Carey to the other vacant seat on the township commission.
Have support on that?
I'll second that. Oh, okay.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. On that conversation, as it was alluded, Mr. Cullis, by law, statute, has the choi, has the final decision on making that choice. Under normal circumstances, I say that, you know, we give him our recommendations and say, you know, he makes that choice. But considering some certain circumstances that I think maybe on this time, he should just take the board's recommendation, and that is because Mr. Cullis has publicly stated he wants to see this board dissolved and taken within, under the leadership of the township. And, you know, and that consideration right there, I would, you know, I don't think it'd be kind of disingenuous to appoint somebody of his recommendation, because who would know if this, these people were really interested in keeping this an independent board? So, I would ask on this occasion, you know, I'm not questioning the law, because the law is that, that Mr. Cullis considered the fact that because of his position on, you know, talking about putting forth a petition proposal, on a ballot proposal, that he considered taking our recommendations for this. But that's, you know, up to him on that, so we will pass it along to the board on that. All right, moving on.
So, total strangers, has anybody interviewed any of these people?
Well, at this point, it's a recommendation to Mr. Cullis. If you'd like to call and, you know, we're not, we're not approving them at all. We don't have that. We can make recommendations to Mr. Cullis. Mr. Cullis would like to call. That is someone who filled out an application to us, so that would be Mr. Cullis's call to talk to those people and, you know, decide if they were correct or not. You've heard our, you know, recommendations on them, so it's still up to Mr. Cullis. So, that's...
Quick procedural question. So, I know the, I know the one board member knows the first applicant, but the second one that you guys recommended, none of you know him, none of you are familiar with him, none of you are any of that, and you're still recommending?
Recommending that Mr. Cullis consider, like I said, Mr. Cullis can call and talk to them.
You're recommending somebody you don't know.
What grounds are you recommending, is what I'm asking?
Okay, okay.
Yeah, it's the application, I guess you would say, on that.
Right, so you're just recommending that you have an application that meets minimal criteria, and from there, Mr. Cullis will make the decision to interview, and then what? You guys set up the interview?
No, Mr. Cullis, Mr. Cullis has the final decision on that.
This is an Open Meetings Act violation. You're not supposed to have dialogue with people. This is exactly what I'm saying.
Yeah, well, I apologize, but I don't think it's, you know, it's... But the fact of the matter is, Mr. Cullis has, we got an application in. Now, if we had several applications, you know, we'd recommend them all. We happen to know one of the people here, and it's our strong recommendation that Mr. Cullis consider them.
Of the last applicant, I know of the gentleman. I don't know him personally. He's been mostly around town all his life, in town and out of town. And I was at the nature center, he filled out the application, and introduced myself to him, and I know of him, I don't know him personally, but I haven't heard anything bad about the guy. And I had, we gave him the application, he filled it out and gave it to us.
Okay, moving on to new business, interview for program coordinator candidates. At this time, I would like to invite our first applicant, and that would be Amy Chiler. Is that it to come up?
I'm Chiler.
She's a child. And at this time, Josh, excuse me, you asked not to be filmed on this?
No, I, I'm okay with it.
Okay.
The reason I was trepidatious was because I knew there was like a lot of hostility in the community right now, and I didn't know how that would go, but since everybody seems to be here, I guess it doesn't really matter.
Okay, well, I see people, if you'd like to have a seat at the table, or you could sit up at the podium, whichever is your choice here.
Yeah, I, whatever's, I mean, yeah, I got the microphone here. Yeah, I'm good. I'm a little shorter than the microphone.
Well... Hello, would you like to tell us about yourself and some of your work experience, please?
Sure, absolutely. So, I've been living here in Holly for 15 years. I teach yoga at the nature center, which you already know, and I think I've met most of you except for Courtney. Hi, Amy. I have two boys that are both college age now, but I homeschooled them, and now I just have more time on my hands, because I'm an empty nester, and so I'm interested in the position. I'd like to grow the programs. My program's doing really well, so I'd like to see other things for the community. And I feel confident that I can do it, just because of the success of mine. We had to waitlist the last class, and I've been doing it now for over 10 years.
Have you ever organized events for nonprofit groups, and can you give us a few examples?
Yes. I worked as the technical coordinator for a nonprofit theater group for about a decade, where we had to do fundraisers, like bake sales, we did raffles, various things in order to organize it. I also served on the board of directors for that same group and was with them when they were just like a smaller loose group of kids and families doing theater, and then as we approached nonprofit status and achieved it. And now it's a big group that I still volunteer for occasionally and help paint backdrops and whatnot.
What do you see your greatest strengths that would bring to the position?
I really love the parks. I, I don't know, my kids grew up doing some lessons, and both my boys lifeguarded at the beach. I, I don't know, I like to walk the trails. I just feel like I'm really connected already to, to that aspect of it, so I would like to sort of expand on what's already working and then just add, you know, some tweaks here or there, give it some TLC so that we can grow it and maybe reach out to the community and see what sort of talents other people have that they would like to share. Like, I started my program doing a 60/40 split with the parks, so it helped me make some extra money, and I feel like I can kind of facilitate that for other people.
What would you say your greatest challenge if you took this position?
Um, I think, I mean, clearly, the animosity that's going on right now, like, I would like to see maybe some compromises reached, and, I mean, maybe it's overly idealistic, but some healing take place, and everybody just kind of calm down a little bit, take a breath. Really excited about the disc golf course, you know, I came out for the volunteer event. Both of my sons are college-age boys, they love to play disc golf, so they can't wait to come home for the summer and check it out. But yeah, so I think the difficulty would just be, obviously, there's a lot of tension, you know, so, and maybe my weakness would be that I'm too idealistic, and I think everyone can get along.
Have you had any experience in grant writing?
I have a BA in English and helped my, one of my main professors get some grants for a writing project that she's doing. I've already looked into some grant opportunities for the parks. There's one in particular that's for small rural communities, so I feel pretty confident that I can achieve that, yes.
Do you have any experience working with diversified groups?
Absolutely. I have volunteered and worked professionally with people of, with disabilities. I worked with some amputees, some veterans, teaching yoga, so I feel like I'm competent in that area. I've worked with little kids, senior citizens, like, I feel, yeah, I feel pretty, pretty comfortable with most age groups and people with various backgrounds.
Are you familiar with the Holly community?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I mean, again, my kids didn't, well, actually, they did go to Holly High. We, we homeschooled, but Holly High was excellent in letting them take elective, so they did like foreign language in our classes there, and also O-Tech. Both my boys played Little League when they were little. Like I said, we did some lessons at the beach and when it was at the high school, and my boys both lifeguarded. So, yeah, we're connected.
How would people describe your work ethic?
I think that I am a pretty hard worker. I feel, I feel like work is a privilege. I had an uncle who had a pretty serious disability where it was a type of muscular dystrophy that affected his arms and hands, and he only ever had one job in his life and got fired because he was too slow, and he would talk all the time about how much he loved that job, and it was as a dishwasher at a Coney Island. And I think I grew up listening to those stories and thinking, wow, working is a privilege. And so, being able to accomplish something and feel useful feels really good to me, so I put my whole heart in it, and I'm, I'm really excited about the opportunity. And I wanted to say just thanks for, for having enough composure to interview me after all that, so that's, that's a lot. And sorry, Donna, I bet somebody brought you tissues.
Do you have any experience working with government agencies?
I do. I, well, working with the parks, and then in addition to that, for the past two years, I've been working about 10 hours a week at the Fenton Library, which I didn't put on my resume, because I thought it was irrelevant, but then thinking about it, I'm like, no, it's not total. I was doing it because I was considering a master's in library science at the time, but, you know, I got to see how their money is allotted, got to see like which ways it's difficult to get funding for things, which programs work, which don't. So, I feel like that's been a good education, and my husband has worked for 25 years for Eagle, so I know a lot of, about Eagle, the, yeah, environment, and Egg, I don't even know what it all stands, Great Lakes and energy, I think. They changed their name a lot, but I know what it's like to, to work for the public and have people always telling you that, you know, like, they're your employee because of tax money and whatnot, so, you know, yeah. I feel like I'm familiar.
Any of the other board members have any questions they'd like to ask?
I do. Amy, how would you like to grow this program? Thoughts do you have already on other things that we could be opening up?
Well, yeah, so the, one of the first things I would like to do is open it up to the community at large and see what sorts of, like I said before, talents and skills other people have that they would like to bring. In addition to running my yoga classes, I would like to offer free meditation and like a kids' nature class or story hour that we just offer for free once a week, so that people with young kids can come and get acquainted with the parks. There would be, and then the other programs that I'm hoping people from the community would run, we would charge for, you know, and I think, I don't know, I've got a few ideas. I have a cousin who does haunted trails, so I thought, maybe we could do like a family-friendly something at Sorenson that's like a spooky trail, you know, like not real scary. Right. But something that would be fun for the community. I'd like to do some Christmas stuff. I thought it'd be kind of neat if we even had like a small Christmas tree lot, you know, at Sorenson. I don't know, I've just, ideas like that, things to just let people know we're on the map. Like, I have a couple cousins who grew up in Holly, and they didn't even know the nature center was there, you know, so, I mean, they've moved since, but I just, I like the idea of exposure. Maybe an art fair too. I'm a visual artist, so I thought it might be kind of cool if we did some art classes and then like a small art show, and maybe down the road, like a bigger kind of art fair, you know, where we had people set up tents. I've, I've had a booth at the Ren Fair for years, so I've got some experience with that too.
Great, thank you.
Courtney, did you have any?
Um, no, I don't.
Jill? Donna?
Are you going to be able to deal with all of these personalities? No, I'm the kind person. We all agree to with that.
I think so, I think so. I want to. I'm really excited about, I mean, you know, whether it works out or not, I'm going to keep doing my yoga classes, hopefully you guys will keep me. And, yeah, I don't know, I think so.
And you know that it is a part-time job at this point?
Yes, absolutely. That's, that's perfect for me, because I teach, I teach art at the Flynn Institute of Arts, so I'll be doing both jobs, so with the two part-time, I'll be full-time. But, yeah, I think I can make it work.
Thank you, dear.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
And our next...
Thank you guys for coming.
This is Lauren.
Hi, Lauren.
You can either stand or...
Have a seat at the table there?
Whichever.
Is our mic working over there?
I don't know.
Could you tap the mic there, see if that's in front of you?
There is no, there is no mic.
Oh, there is no mic. Wow, that probably...
Hi, how are you?
Hello.
Hi there. Well, tell us about yourself, your name and...
My name is Susan, and I have a background in program coordinating. I'm actually an event manager. I do events for large conferences. I do them for corporations, and I do them for national associations. So, I do conferences, event planning. My background is in program coordinating. I've done it for two cities, Novi and Wixom. I did it for Wixom for the senior center, and for Novi, I was a program coordinator from preschool to seniors. So, I did their programming, enrichments, city events, you name it.
Have you ever organized events for nonprofit groups? Give us a few of the examples, I think you're ready.
My background is majorly nonprofit, so I worked for Charter School District, and I worked for the cities. So, events that I did, I did, just for an example, a teenage one that I did, we did one something called Fire Up Fest in Novi, and that brought in about 800 teenagers. We did a Battle of the Bands. We did, we brought in about seven or eight different schools out of the district that came to visit. It was after a football game. We had a huge bonfire. I had the police department there, fire department there, but I fed them well. We had food trucks, so we had a good time. It was fun.
What do you see your greatest strength is that you would bring to this position?
I have a ton of experience. I have lots of experience, and I love community.
What would you say is your greatest challenge if you took this position?
I have a ton of ideas, so probably accomplishing all of them. Once you get me going, I can't stop.
Okay. Have you ever had any experience in grant writing?
Yes, I have. When I worked for the Charter School District, I did grant writing for the state of Michigan, and I had a couple of grants that we got. The best one that we did receive were two of them. One was for the Detroit Red Wings Foundation for our Charter School District, and the other one was for Sticks for Kids, which was a PGA grant that we got for golf clubs. So, what we did is we started a enrichment for golf. So, we were granted, PGA came in and they did an assessment for our school in our district, and we were granted, I think it was 22 sets of junior golf clubs. So, then we started running the golf programs, and the YMCA in Milford had facility in transportation, but no kids for their programming, so I had the kids and no facility, and so we kind of combined together, and they would do shuttle, and we would go back and forth, and sometimes I would hold the golf program there, because they had a huge field, and then sometimes they would just bring programming to us to enhance that. And so, the Y and I, we, we worked closely together.
Obviously, I'm going to say you probably answered this, but if you could give a little bit more. Do you have any experience working with diverse groups?
Yes, so I've, I've worked with... Yes, so I've, I've worked with economically, all different groups financially. Um, I worked for a nonprofit organization called The Community House in Birmingham, so I went all the way over on that end and worked for a lot of people in that community. So I've worked for different backgrounds, different, everything.
Are you familiar with the Holly community?
I, I'm familiar by coming here and enjoying festivals and being a part of the community in that way. We just moved out into the Fenton area, so I'm kinda coming out this way a little more.
How would you describe, how would people describe your work ethic?
But I'm a very hard worker. I'm the mother of five kids, so that, that pretty much sums me up.
Uh, do you have experience working with government agencies?
I do, yeah.
Yeah, thank you for all these. Uh, how would you like to see, how do you see growth in, uh, programs in Holly?
Well, for Holly, I see that you, you don't have a lot of programs, so that's something that you have huge potential in that area. So the growth in the programs, there's a huge potential in that area, but you have to start small. You have to see what the community likes, where your programming is gonna land. Is it gonna be your senior programming? Is it gonna be your youth programming? Where is the need? Where is the want, first of all? Is it family programming? I know first and foremost, you need community programming because that's huge. Bringing people into your community, which would build up in your, um, small businesses in the area, showing off kinda who you are, but I think you just have to do an assessment on the demographic and who is needing what, where, when, and why. Those are all very important things, and then what comes into that factor is the factor of the season. During seasons, programming is completely different, and when you program, you need to program not only by season, but you need to program for a year, and then once you see what that year looks like for enrichment programming, you then assess that year and say, okay, now I can plan two years in advance, and that's how you get it to go and roll. For the Charter School District, they had no enrichment programming there, and that's how I established it. And after four and a half years of programming with them before I went on to my new position, we went from zero enrichments to thirty-five enrichments a week. So the kids had a vast amount of things that they could choose, choose from, and that was preschool all the way through, through high school.
And you do know it's a part-time position?
I do.
Okay, and there's not an issue with that?
No, that's a good thing.
I think that was about all the questions. Anybody have anything that, add? Well, thank you for coming in.
Okay, thank you.
And we will be making the decision on it. All right. I guess the next question is your, uh, is vote on the program candidates. Do I hear a motion to consider a vote?
To consider a vote.
Well, I guess we're going to vote, I guess is, yeah, I shouldn't say that. Courtney, uh, I'm gonna let you count the votes on here.
All right.
And do we, let's see if we, we have a piece of paper on for each of us to, thank you, Donna. Jill? Pass it on to Jill, please. One for you.
Are we sticking with the same letter numbers as last time?
Uh, no, we're just, we're names this time. And...
I think so.
And I'll let you count both.
Oh, yeah. I was gonna pass it to. All right.
All right. Okay, we have a decision here, and we will be contacting the individual, see if they will accept us this evening, and we will be announcing who that person is if they accept. So, uh, we have no other items. We will go to second round of public comment. And as the same members of the public can address the board once recognized by the chairperson, comments are limited to a maximum of four minutes. The board may extend this time up to an additional four minutes by a majority vote. Prior to addressing, the board members of the public are requested to clearly state their name and address for the record. Do we have some public comment? Oh, you're gonna need the mic back. Thank you, Josh.
Hello. Allison Delaney, um, two-one-zero College Street. Uh, I guess this is just a procedural que- question. Um, I'm just surprised you guys didn't discuss the candidates that just interviewed before voting. Is that typical?
Well, we looked, we went over the resumes, and we looked at the resumes before, and then the questions on it. I mean, I guess we could have spoken, but it was pretty much, at this point, was dependent on what we...
I think we discussed it at the last meeting.
All right.
Okay, that was it.
I mean, you know, at this point, we felt we had, you know, reviewed the, the resumes and that, and the interviews were the last step in it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mary.
Mary Blanchard, three-four-four-four Old Creek Drive. And I have attended a couple of meetings, and I have brought up the fact that many years ago, I was on the park board, and at that time, we never had any contact with the township board when it came to any decisions regarding board people, staff people, or even, uh, much to do with the budget, until we had to present it to the township board. I, I understand that Mr. Supervisor Cullis feels that it is part of the law. I'm just wondering if this board has ever researched that directly.
No, we haven't. I have not myself, no.
I, I think you might.
I did.
Did you?
I did, and, and it is an obscure law, and he does have the right to do it. It, it hasn't never done, he's never had to, they, they haven't ever done it before until he disagreed with the person that we...
I, I understand that.
And then, and then all of a sudden, that law...
Okay. If the board is satisfied, that, that was not the policy previously.
Jill?
I'd like to address Mary's comment. I've been on the board for quite a few years, and Mary was on our board, and she is right. We, we never had no problems with who we chose because, uh, the supervisors...
Jill, why don't we, why don't we save that to comments on that, because we're taking, because this should be a time for people to...
Uh, thank you, Pat. April Brandon, four-one-four Oakland Street. You might not have answers for this, and that's okay, but I was sitting here kinda wrecking my brain. The first candidate, amazing lady, her husband worked for Eagle, and I was trying to remember, if Eagle makes any decisions regarding the parks, would there be a conflict of interest in hiring her? And that's all. I don't need an answer, just wanted to...
No, Eagle has no bearing over us. No, yeah, that's not, nothing on that level.
Then you can answer that. Thanks for that.
Any other comp, for public comment? Joanna?
Joanna Barnes, three-three-nine-three Harrington Drive. I don't know if you plan on discussing our comments here tonight after we leave. It's a little disappointing that the board didn't address our concerns with Mr. Feeny's behavior, considering how threatened some of us feel, but whatever is decided, I would like you to take a look at the top of your, your agenda right here, right at the very top, where you talk about your standards of behavior that promote civility at all public meetings. Mr. Feeny, I would encourage you to just carry this in your pocket, and maybe the next time you feel like lashing out as a citizen, pull this out and read it. Take a breath, take a beat, before you decide to attack somebody again. I think it could benefit you in the, in the future greatly, and it could certainly benefit the citizens of this town. Thank you.
Any other, is this for public comment?
Keith Barnes, three-three-nine-three Harrington Drive. Mr. Feeny, I had to ask you after a council meeting, uh, a little bit of, a little bit of a time ago, to, for you to take your hands off my wife. You need to resign immediately, sir. Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? All right, we will move on to... I'm sorry, Mr. Cullis, I did not see.
George Cullis, six-on-one East Maple Street. The Parks Act came into existence in nineteen fifty-one, and in that act, unlike the Library Board Act, it gives the township oversight of the park budget, and it assigns open chairs. The responsibility is that of the supervisor. Now, I don't know what happened before I came in as a township supervisor. As the township supervisor, when I came in, I was handed, not too long after that, two openings. If an opening is filled in the first part of that term, that person serves until the next election, and at that election, they would be elected for two years to fill the term. If, in this particular case, an opening exists, they will be appointed to fill out the rest of the term. The first two times names came to me as a recommendation from the board. The only thing I did with those names was I switched who sat, who filled which term, and I did it because one of the people had already put their name on the ballot to run, and the other one had not, and it was past the date that that person could put their name. So I gave the one position to the person with the name that was the shorter one, and I gave the other one the position that filled it until the next election, which was the longer part of the term because it fell right at the time of elections. It was the only change I made. I put both those people on. The one that we're talking about, a name came forward that I had personal, um, experience with in putting on a commission on the village side. Under the guise of transparency, I came back to this board, and I said, I would not be appointing that name, and I brought a different name forward. Now, the township board is the one that approves names, and we had several people that had, um, submitted paperwork for that open position. I read them, I interviewed them, and I put them on the list, and I said to the township board, that's the first name I'll recommend, so on and so forth down the list, and the board voted. Now, in this particular case here today, you, sir, and your committee, put out an RFP asking for people that wanted to serve on this board. You also went out on Facebook and told people to contact me, which means the ones you had contact me didn't contact you. So those names are still there, and I do, I have, I have interviewed everybody that's name I have brought forward, with the exception of that lady, only because she was gonna serve one more month. The election was there. She was already on the ballot, and there were no other names on the ballot, so it was gonna be her seat anyway. I don't remember who that lady was. She served with you for a while, older lady. So, so that, that addresses that. Um, there was another, oh, the other accusation that I heard was that the Michelle that was up here was a plant of mine. That's an interesting accusation, too, because I met her. The last meeting you had over at the, um, nature center a few, few weeks ago, maybe a month ago, she came into that meeting and introduced herself to me. I didn't know who she was when she came through the door. I had met her before. She informed me. She's a 4-H leader. I have been a judge for 4-H for many, many years, and she was in charge of one of the groups that I judged, so I had come in contact with her before I didn't know her. And, and when Mr. Miskovich came on the board, there was a name that you had brought forward that I said I wouldn't bring. The other name I was willing to bring, you weren't happy with. Mr. Miskovich came to my house, said he was interested in the position. I said, if you're interested, go home, submit a, a request, and he did. So you can say all you want that I have the right to veto everything you do. I've never vetoed anything but one name, and under the guise of, um, transparency, I'm sorry, under the guise of, I came right to your board and told you why. So I'm sorry if you don't like the law. Talk to the legislature. As far as my stating publicly that we need to, as a township, we need to look at dissolving the parks board, there are twelve-hundred-and-forty townships in the state of Michigan, and according to the MTA, there are less, there are about twenty park boards left. They have been, over the years, getting rid of the parks board. In Oakland County, the only other two townships to have them are West Bloomfield and Oakland Township. In this township, we have a, we have two parks, boards or commissions. The village has one, the township has one. We have seven parks that are inside the township, and I do believe that if we eliminated this park board and the township, then the commission went under the administrative oversight of the township board, and we combine these two parks with the five from the village, that would be a more efficient way to run these parks. And I have talked about that, and there are many people that agree with me, and those conversations will be had going forward. So I just wanted to clear that up for you. Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment?
Angela Wallace, seven-on-nine Beard Street. I thought it was very interesting that Ms. Barnes brought up the fact that, um, there was no talk between the board about what happened, and there was five people who called for the resignation of your chairperson. If the board does not do that, that shows that you agree with what his behavior has been, that you agree that it's okay for him to abuse and violate women in this community. So I guess we're putting it back on the board members to do something about it. If not, there could be a recall initiated, because this is unacceptable for every woman in this entire community who Mr. Feeny has decided it's okay to touch, it's okay to berate, and that it's okay to disrespect. That leads me to concern for the two ladies that you interviewed today. If they do or say something that Mr. Feeny does not like, and he touches them or berates them, that's workplace harassment, so I think you all better decide long and hard about who you want for your chairperson and what you're going to do about it, because it falls on your shoulders.
Anybody else for public comment? Christine?
Krista Watt, one-on-two South First Street, number three. This is something that might come as a, uh, unexpected statement for me, but the one thing I will say, there's many people in this room tonight, um, behind the, here, and many out here. Over the course of several years, most of, most of you know me. I know you, like personally. It's a small town. We all know each other. Uh, many of us have been to many other meetings. We've been on opposite sides of issues. We've, we don't agree on a lot of things, whether that's socially, politically, local government, what road should be what, like, you know, that's life. But the one thing that I think, with maybe the exception of a couple people who just don't care for me, and that's okay. I'm not for everybody. Um, there are a lot of people in this room who might really not care for me or don't agree with my, my line of thinking, or, you know, whatever. They've never disrespected me. They have never yelled at me. I've never yelled at them, and if we have issues, we bring it to the meeting. We bring it to this pulpit. We, we exercise our rights as citizens to address our elected leaders. I am on the library board, and again, like April said, I don't speak for any of that, but if you wanna come to my library board or our library board meeting, and you got heat to, to give me over something with the library, that's part of what comes with the territory of being an elected official, but with that comes great responsibility. But with that comes great responsibility in how I conduct myself and treat people in this community. And I know you're leaving, but I did want to give him a shout out, because George, who we have been on the opposite side of many issues many times, has no jurisdiction over removal of, of board members or anything like that. But I called him this week. Angela called him this week. April called him this week. And he listened, and he was compassionate. And he, I can't say and speak for him, but this is something with someone where he and I have actually been on very heated up, opposite sides of things. And we could still have compassion and respect for each other, because that's what communities do. And I find it, and maybe in your board comments, maybe you will have something to say, I don't know. But I find it absolutely unsettling. We did not come here for fun, we do not find this fun. If you saw my leg shaking throughout this entire meeting, I have anxiety. I have PTSD. I've never talked about that publicly, and I'm not ashamed to say it. Many people in this town, we're a veteran Purple Heart community, we have a lot of PTSD in this town. And you don't know what people are going through when you approach them. And I'm sure I've made mistakes myself, but at the, in that sense. And maybe we're not being mindful all the time, but maybe we need some mindfulness training around here. Because most of my weekend was physically, Joe saw me, I came to the parks commission, or Donna saw me. I had an anxiety attack, like bad, like it was humiliating, it was embarrassing. Falling on the ground in the middle of Waterworks Park because I could not biologically contain, well, I don't have control over that, because I have this condition, over something that may, most people would think would be silly, but it's not. It's an actual diagnosis that I have. He doesn't know that, y'all didn't know that, many people in this room have that same diagnosis. And ha, being screamed at and yelled at in public is not ever okay, but it is certainly not okay. Toward women, toward special needs people, toward veterans, toward, toward anybody. But you don't know what people have been through. And I want to thank Supervisor Colas for having compassion for the women who reached out to him this week to just be heard. And I do expect, I know that y'all can't vote people off and stuff, but you could make a motion that you all agree that the chairperson should be stepping down right now. And that would show solidarity with the people in this community. We need effective leadership who are not abusive to their citizens. Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment?
Tressa Kennard, five, four, nine, nine, East Holly Road. Um, I wasn't going to talk, but, and I don't want to beat a dead horse, but, um, I was standing in line, I've never met you, I don't know you from anyone. And my niece, who is nine years old, turned to me and was like, "Why is that man so angry?" And she was trying to show Kristen her eyeshadow, like, it was ridiculous. I have no reason to have any sides here. It, I was blown away by the way that you were behaving. And it was embarrassing, and it was hard to try to explain to my niece why someone would behave like that. And then we left and saw you on the corner with the girls talking. Again, and your body language says everything anyone needs to know, but your, your tone and everything, it just, i- it was very upsetting to me as just a random citizen standing in line at the coffee shop. It was very upsetting to me and my niece, so, thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to, uh, council board member comments. Kathleen?
Do you want to start?
Go ahead.
I don't know the actual way to appropriately weigh in on the comments that I've listened to tonight, except to say that I'm shocked, I'm disappointed, I'm embarrassed. I think as far as people calling for a resignation, I think that's up to the person. And, um, yet, I want to apologize. I think that this, um, behavior is unacceptable. And I also think that, um, the citizens deserve better and more. You know, I get as mad as anybody else. But again, agreeing with your statements that elected officials need to have more decorum than just other citizens. And, and that's a known, um, honor, part of, part of being elected. I think, you know, I'm, I'm very sad about this evening and how the, the whole weight of this meeting is, because we have some good forward movement here. We have two excellent candidates for program coordinator, which we sorely need to, uh, get, you know, in place, as you, as many people have noted. You know, it's been one thing after another since last year, June, when the former supervisor resigned short notice.
Retired.
Reti, I'm sorry, yeah, she retired, uh, took a different position. I just asked the public to know that we are, as, as a commission, and me personally, am trying to fix it and, and to keep the ball rolling on these parks. Again, it's, they're, they're diamonds in the rough. With the, we're excited with the disc golf coming in, the program coordinator being, uh, set in place. There's a lot of good things happening. But it seems like every time we take two steps forward, we take eight steps back. So, you know, just know that, that is not at all what any of us really, you know, would have liked to have seen happen in this past year. And, um, I know, you know, uh, again, you know, people leaving the commission, it's been a lot. And, and I, I know that a lot of you are familiar with how government works. You can't, uh, you don't, you know, you can't, um, personally make decisions on spending money or hiring or firing without the commission. And then, you know, e, even though so many special meetings have been called, in, in trying to get the forward movement that I see possible here, then it takes another week or a month to actually get to the meat of what you're trying to get to. It's very frustrating. But I thank you all for coming, for your comments, and for your, um, I guess, candidness, is the way I want to say it? And again, I apologize for the commission. From the commission. And by next?
Yes. I, uh, totally agree with everything that you said. I just think it's ridiculous. People do not have the right to treat other people in that way. I myself have same kind of condition. And it was because of a father, you know? And the yelling that went on in my household all the time. And that's one thing that I do not agree on. There's ways of doing things. I mean, I'm teaching my one-year-old granddaughter to take a breath, count to five, and think about what you're saying and make good choices. And it's really sad that you have to tell an adult that. I apologize. I feel really, in my heart, I know what, what you're going through. And, but we can't just say, there's steps that have to be taken. And I know I don't know it all, that's why I do a lot of research on everything. I try, I try to research everything that I, I do. And I know that I was put on this board, and you didn't have one word to say about that, but I'm sure you're sorry about that now. I think that I, I would love to see all the parks together, but I can't see how it's going to happen with the money situation and how it's all going to go out. And if somebody can show me how that could happen, I'll be on your side. But right now, I, I just can't, I can't see it. I, I've looked at it, I've tried to figure it out. I, I love both, all parks, I love, that, it's what saved my life, is, is being outside in the parks. Show me how it'll work, show me how we can se- separate this money and put it through all the parks and not have all the parks fall apart. Show me, give me some proof, and I'll be on your side. But right now, I, I can't, I can't see how that's going to happen. And right now, Sorenson, I got on, I got on this board to, for the township, and so that's what I'm working for. They voted me on this board. I was put on, I was thrown on it at, be first, and I didn't have anything to do with politics. My husband would laugh every time we went to the poll and go, "Well, are we just going to cancel each other out this time?" You know? I don't like to be that political, I like to just see things happen. And I like to be in part of seeing things happen in this part. And like Kathleen said, thing, everything has just gone from what, worst to worst. And we've tried, we've tried. And, but we have so many things that we have to follow to get to where we're at. And so many roadblocks, and I'm, I'm old, I can't keep jumping these things. You know? So, we're, you know, we're trying, we're really trying. And we're trying to put a board together that, uh, with, that has some understanding and not out for their own political business and their own agendas. And, ah, just please bear with us. And like I said, I'm so sorry. It should have never happened, it just should have never happened, not in this town, it shouldn't have happened.
Courtney?
Well, initially, I was going to ask, um, if we could get the Little League on the agenda for next, uh, meeting?
It's on the agenda for next meeting.
Okay. Um, and then I just, I want to apologize as well, I agree with what you guys said, that was strong, that was, um, and I think if we're allow it, I think that if something is making you react in a way that is so full of anger, that, um, I mean, I think that a solution needs to be found for that. So, um, I'm sorry, guys, I know it doesn't need a lot coming from me. That's about it.
Joe?
I don't know a lot of these people personally in this room. I've been involved in village politics and township politics since nineteen ninety-two. I was on village council, I was village president, I was on parks, village parks. Right now, I'm appointed to village parks and village, village zoning board of appeals. I'm here to help the community. As far as combining the parks, the village parks has only a budget of between ten and twenty thousand dollars a year, which takes in consideration DPW is doing all the maintenance and stuff. So we have a very small budget. And we look at buying a couple garbage cans and a couple, uh, picnic tables a year. The new play escape was brought in from the village under the general fund, the new one at Lakeside. So to combine them, uh, where's the money going to come from? You know, we're, we're running this off, off a half a mil. So if we only have ten more thousand dollars, and there's all these parks in the village, just mowing all my loans is going to eat up everything. That's my comment on parks and parks. And I always like to combine both parks, because that's what it's about. Anything we can do for each other without mixing monies legally, we do it. Everybody on the board does, we're all for parks and parks. We're trying to get joint help. Last Saturday, there was thirty-five people volunteered, and some were sent to us, thirty or twenty of them, to help Waterworks Park. And if you go down there and you see that place, it, that's the forgotten park of the village. A lot of hard work in there. Two weeks ago, it was under two foot of water. And we, we put a heck, heck of a dent in it. That's my speech on parks and parks. Now, I'm going to speak about politicians and people in the public. I don't care if you, if you embrace people in the public and they have your trust, I don't care if it's in the school, I don't care if it's in scouting, I don't care if it's in the village or the township, or state, federal, or, or local government. When you betray that trust, you'll never get it back. We're here for the people. I worked for General Motors, and we went through extensive training with, uh, personality formations, because we had to work with so many, so many diversified people at General Motors. So we had training back in the seventies and eighties of how to get along with people, what you can say, what you can't say. You, you keep your private thoughts to yourself. And I feel bad about what has, what's come here tonight, to had to bring all you people here. I, I feel the hurt, I feel the pain. I saw you at, at last, last Saturday, and, uh, I was shocked. I worked in, uh, copper mines in Arizona, I have PTSD for being an ambulance driver underground disasters. So I understand what it takes to trigger somebody. It could be something very miniscule, or it could be really tough. And, um, a lot of people know me, I'm frank, and if I have something to say to somebody, I'm going to say it to your face, because that's the way I was raised. I don't go behind people's back, I don't have a computer, I don't have a cellphone, I don't go on Instagram, I don't go on electronic media. If I have something to say, you got an address, I'm going to come over and see you, or you got a telephone, I'm going to come and call you. But I like to see people face to face. If I have something to say to somebody, or something about somebody, I'm going to come up to them and say it in their face, because that's the way I am. I'm frank, and I'm honest. And I, I don't play games. And I'm sorry that, what happened, very sorry what happened. And I apologize, because I'm also on this commission. And, um, I feel for what, what has happened. And I was chairperson for about thirteen years. And other people came on, and I said, "Hey, here we go. I'm not going to hog this. I'm, uh, chairperson of, uh, village parks right now, and co-chair of zoning board of appeals. I'm there to help." And now I'm going to start driving the smart bus on Tuesdays and Thursdays, because they're shorthanded. So, uh, as far as what, what this board can do to another board member, we can't kick them out. We can sanction them. It's very hard to get rid of an elected official. Kwame Kilpatrick, we'll take it as an example, but, yeah, it's hard to get rid of a, a elected official. And our board can sanction whatever person that has, uh, done wrong in, in the eyes of, of the public in our rules of procedure. And I thank you all for coming here tonight and expressing your feelings, and also being very civilized about it all. You know? That's all I have to say. And I'm very sorry for what's happened. And, um, as, as a board member, I think, uh, we're going to have to get together and, and straighten this out. And we'll make sure it's straightened out, because that's how you believe in people. I don't want to void your trust in this board, or any other board around here, whether it's county, state, or federal. So that's the way I feel about it, and that's all I have to say.
Well, I'll begin by a simple fact. Your behavior was, I consider, a lie, but one thing I will state, number one, April, never touched you. Number two, number two, Angela, I shook your hand, that was the last, we had partying on Saturday. But you went to the right place, you filed a report. April, Joanne, I suggest you go file, too. I mean, it's out there. No, I understand if, I should be held accountable, I should be held accountable if that is true. I should be held accountable. No, I'm just saying you should, if you believe that's what I did, you should, you know? Okay. And Michelle, you asked, Michelle, you at, no, uh, you, you know, you'll get, you'll get your wish, ladies and gentlemen. But Michelle, you asked for resumes. You at, you asked for resumes. Good riddance, people.
You need to resign. You should at least apologize to the people. You don't know. You're disgusting. You're disgusting, Brad.
You're a pig asshole.
I will be heading that committee, I promise you that.
All right. So as I was saying, Michelle, you claimed to have resumes that you weren't allowed to have from, from candidates.
I submitted a FOIA to another person, and it was received. You had five business.
The FOI, you claim to have, you claim to have resumes, which this board will have to deal with later on, you claim to have resumes from people who applied for the supervisor's position. That's illegal.
It's not information.
No, it is not. It, it is not, you're not going to get it under a FOIA. You're not, you're not going to get, you're not, no, I'm speaking, you're not getting, that is not under a FOIA. It's illegal for you to have those resumes. You have stated you had those resumes. That's illegal, plain and simple. You know, that's for this board to figure out what they're going to do later on about it, on that.
When you say it's illegal, based on what?
George, you think that an individual does not have the right, other than this board, to look at those resumes?
Once they're submitted to the township, they're public record. The only thing that isn't public record is if it's in the.
Well, I guess you'd need to get a court ruling on that, because there's a difference of opinion. You didn't file FOIA with the parks, so that's.
The Michigan law, I printed it out for you, it's in that packet.
Who did you file the FOIA with? Who? Who? When?
March 18th. If you had looked at the packet I submitted, copy of my email, which legally, per state of Michigan, means it's official request.
Well, you know, at this, at this point in time, I see this attack.
Yeah, you don't do it, we all know that already.
All right. I apologize for the public for, you know, my, my behavior on this. And as I said, individuals who want to say that I have done that, and all these things, they should file a complaint. That's exactly what they should do. The board, I know you're disappointed with me, I think, you know, and you have the total right to be disappointed with that. And at this point in time, you know, I see these individuals who come here, and we see this time and time again, when they're not happy with something, it's a, you know, it's an attack.
Ah!
You know, it's like, well.
Gaslight.
You know, I guess it's going to be, you can have your say, but nobody else can have their say. As it goes for the Little League, we were not putting you off on any means, on, on speaking from anybody with the Little League, I just want to finish by saying, we did not put them off. Michelle, when she was texting me different messages, she did ask, she said, no, Michelle, it would not make any difference with these board members what was considered.
I requested it during the March 16 meeting in Public County. It's in the minutes, it's in the video.
That's fine, Michelle, but you also, like I said, obviously, we have a difference of opinion about you possessing, asking for resumes and being a candidate for the office. So, at this point in time, I think there's not going to be anything accomplished by me saying anymore. Like I said, I apologize to this board for any embarrassment that it may have caused there. You know, I have to take some time to think about what I'm going to do on this. I think, you know, I hope the best for going forward with this. At this point in time, I think the best thing probably to do is adjourn this meeting, because I don't think there's going to be anything accomplished constructively here, so, everybody have a good evening.
What time?
7:35.
7:35.